I'd like to call the meeting of the Narragansett Regional School Committee to order, and we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being recorded by the Narragansett Regional School District, and we provide that recording to Templeton and Phillipston Cable Access TV. I would take a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 15th.
Can you make the motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 15th?
I have a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain because I wasn't here.
So we have one abstention. Any other abstentions?
Which I wasn't.
And Jeff is well. So two abstentions. Any opposition? No, so. Motion moved. I would take an approval of the meeting minutes of August 22nd.
So moved.
I have a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second. Are there any discussions? Hearing no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Jeff will abstain. Next, I will take a motion to approve the bills and payroll.
I move that we approve the bills and payroll.
I have a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous. I'd like to take a moment just to welcome our new school committee member, Jeffrey Marks from the town of Phillipston. So welcome. If you would indulge us and just maybe say a few words about your background, and then we'll let you talk after that.
Sure. So, my name is Jeffrey Marks. I am a resident of Phillipston. I've had four children go through their district. I've been in this community for six years. And I'm employed by the state. I am a facilities director for Greenfield Community College. I've been there for 10 years. I was at Boston College for 15 years before that. I was at Stoneville College as well. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Welcome. Next would be our student representative. I know we don't have any this evening because they are all busy with sports events, so they were not here tonight. So hopefully next month we can catch up with what's going on with the students. Dr. Kazivan, I will turn it over to you for some new staff introduction.
Thank you. So, it's been a busy summer with a lot of, can't say a lot, but a fair amount of turnover. Some we knew about, and some we were surprised with. So, one of the staff changes that we did know about is that we knew that we were going to need an assistant, pardon me, a principal for the middle school. And we had a pretty length, well, it was a very robust search process. And there was quite a few candidates. And from that list of candidates, there were a lot of very well-qualified candidates. And I'm happy to say that of all of those wonderful candidates, Ms. Mary LaFreniere, who, I don't know if you wanted to come down and say a few words.
Sure, come down.
Sure. Is, was selected way back, it seems like so long ago, at the beginning of August. And Mary joined us at the tail end of August, and has done a wonderful job sailing this ship that she's honestly had never seen before, quite frankly. And has just done a wonderful job. And I honestly have never received so many positive comments about administrators in over the last two years, as I have in the last three weeks. So it's been a wonderful, well, it's a wonderful experience, obviously. So, I get to Ms. Mary LaFreniere.
Well, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. I'm coming from a district where I was pretty much every role but custodian for 23 years, taught for 17 years, and then, you know, moved from kind of role to role, assistant principal, department chair, assistant principal, principal. And was not necessarily in the market for a job, but I was hearing so many great things about Narragansett, both from, just in general, and people who actually work here, that I wanted to throw my hat in the ring for the assistant, excuse me, middle school role. And when I got to the interview, that sealed it. The interview committee was lovely. And again, I just, from the day, first day I got here, including today, and I even pulled Dr. Kazivan to my office today. Can I tell him what I said?
We are in camera, but yes.
I said, "I have to say this out loud to somebody or else I'm going to explode. This place is a gold mine." And it's just been, from day one, the spirit of the staff, the kids are lovely. I'm just, I'm so impressed with how cohesive the community is. I'm finding even more, we were speaking in the hallway today, the connections within the buildings between the kids and the adults is just so heartwarming, and it's so nice. And people have been so lovely and welcoming. So, I am very excited to be here. It is only day 27 of my entire tenure here, so. It feels like, in some ways, it feels like it's been longer just because it's going so well and so smoothly. But that really is a testament to how wonderfully, you know, the staff is entrenched in where they are and how dedicated they are. So I definitely want to say thank you to them for that, as well as everyone in Central for making this an easy transition for me. Scary, but it was much easier than I thought, so very glad to be here.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And so there was the addition that we knew about. On or about the, oh, I don't know, it was the 6th or 7th of August, Mr. North, the BES and Dublin Center principal, you know, came to me, and we talked about he had an opportunity in another district, and he decided to take that. So, we were frantic, of course, and we reached out to a few folks that we knew, and we were looking, you know, honestly, just, we're just gonna just stay the course. We're just gonna find a really just solid person. And we, of course, we couldn't be luckier. And we've well exceeded our expectations, given that we were two weeks away from the opening of a school. Ms. Emily Saltisik, thankfully, was available, willing, to come on board. And she, it's an interesting story because you had met Ms. Bishan, Courtney Bishan, whom is the elementary assistant principal. And you had met her, of course, last June, I think it was, had to be June. And by some unbelievable twist of luck and fate, Ms. Emily Saltisik worked with Ms. Bishan at a previous district. So, it just really was obviously meant to be. But I offer to Ms. Emily Saltisik.
Welcome.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much. I'm very excited to be here. I'm a resident of Berry. Very familiar with the area. Spent years traveling to Winchden when I first started my admin career. And have family all over the area. So it's a very comfortable community for me to be in, especially being so close. I couldn't have been happier to rejoin Courtney. Her and I talk when we have the chance, when we actually see each other, about how we can't imagine this year starting off had we been two new people to each other. So the cohesiveness that we've been able to kind of create has been extremely helpful. But, much to what Mary was saying, the community in general is just positive. And I was thinking about BES, the building itself. And it has no impact on the staff when they walk through that door every day. They're just happy to be there with the kids. They're now doing the day countdown, you know, when they're frustrated with something. It's okay, only 158 more days in this building. We're gonna make it. So there's a lot of that going on, a lot of excitement. And, you know, I actually, well, I walked into Dr. Kazivan's office, I think, just yesterday, and I said, you know, "I spent an hour and 15 minutes talking to a grade level about goal-setting, and I could've spent all night talking to them." They were just go-getters, and they really wanted to push the envelope a little bit. And they're challenging themselves, they can challenge our kids. So overall, it's just been a wonderful experience. And we'll say, "How are you feeling?" And there hasn't really been time to think about it. We're just kind of rolling with it. But it really has been a great, great start. I loved the district that I was in, but that's where my first principalship was. So I kind of feel like I've graduated from that. And it's time to kind of spread my wings a little bit. Thank you for having me.
Welcome.
We are very lucky.
And I will say that we have one other new addition, but we won't meet that person until next month. We tried to arrange all of them, all just in one shot, but we just, the schedule's everything. So the middle school assistant principal, you will meet Mr. Joe Trevisson, which I'm going to work really hard to say his name. I may just call him Joe. I'm not quite sure. But you'll meet Joe next meeting. We just couldn't pull everything together.
When does he start?
He will start Monday, October 1st.
Great. Five days.
No one's counting.
Great. Well, welcome, everyone. It's good to hear that we've got all of our admin positions filled. And we'll talk more about staffing under your superintendent report. Next up, we have our business manager's report, so Mrs. Geister.
There's not much on August either because the bulk of the spending was done over the summer, and it's going to be paid for while on those warrants, as you can see. But I want to talk about busing was really smooth this year. We ended up eliminating a bus from Phillipston and switching it to the elementary. And I think it has made the Baldwinville route so much smoother. Because that's where we added, and then we had to add another bus for the middle-high school level because we're just packed. So it seems to be going smoothly. There wasn't any phone calls. That's always a good thing.
Shout-out, though, to former superintendent twice, I believe, right? Steve Hammond, whom, you know, was always looking towards a rainy day. And so we were able to, you know, when you need a new bus, when you just don't find a bus. And so, through his planning, of course, that was.
We have the regional transportation revolving account for that rainy day.
So that's, you know, certainly that needs to be applauded because not, there aren't many places that would think, you know, for that rainy day. So that's a credit to all that were part of that.
Did anyone have any comments or questions on the financials that were presented? They're available online. And I do want to apologize. We normally have Chromebooks for all of our members tonight. Unfortunately, there was a mix-up with the key. We can't get into the cabinet, which will be resolved for next meeting. So I want to apologize. But I know everybody had access prior to this to take a look at the documents, and they are online. Were there any questions or comments? I'm going to do my best, Rayanne, because she always asks how our grant monies are coming in. If we are.
The money is actually starting to come in on them. They've all been applied for, so the payments are starting to trickle in.
And how are our grant monies as compared to last year?
Less.
Less, like every year?
Yeah.
Okay. The next thing on our agenda are the superintendent goals and mid-cycle evaluation. So we had handed out, in actually way back in June, our evaluation forms for everyone to fill out on the superintendent. And the way that the process works is you really focus on just the goals and just give a quick status on how the superintendent's doing so we can give him some guidance on, do we think he's on target? Has he fallen behind on anything? If there's any comments that we want him to be aware of or we think he might need to focus more. So everyone filled out their forms, and I was able to summarize them. So I have a summary sheet. Once I'm done, I'll hand this into Central Office for Dr. Kazivan can purview on his own, all the little X's. But the first goal was a professional practice goal, which was continuing to strengthen internal and external communication to both community stakeholders and district employees. And that was on target. There were a couple of items that I think are just, you're starting with on there, but overall, the objective's on target. The second goal was student learning, which the superintendent will identify high-impact areas of needed improvement in the areas of student learning. And that as well is on target. And I believe that some of the items, because some of the reports have been delayed in coming out, which I believe now you say you have everything, will start to move on some of those high-impact items that have just become available and continue working. And then the district improvement goal was to work collaboratively with the school committee, the admin team, teacher-students community to create and implement the 2019 to 2022 district strategic plan. A mix of on-target and not-started because most of those activities are, I think, more at a planning stage. So we haven't really seen any activity. So again, no real comments on that, other than, you know, we'll look to see where you end up with once you can get started on that. So I have all of those results. I'm going to pass them down. This summary sheet is somewhere. I'd have to find it. But this I will hand down to Mrs. Barney for safekeeping. And Dr. Kazivan, obviously, can go through that as well. Do you have any commentary or questions for us?
No, no, I appreciate the feedback. Given that, I think it's today, I think that the MCAS is now on embargo.
Tomorrow.
Is embargo lifted for the MCAS today? It's today or tomorrow?
Yeah, I didn't see anything today about it being lifted. So it's midnight the 27th.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the 28th UPS will deliver the box to the school, is what I read.
Right. So with that, that will be, we'll have everything. We already have much of the information, but it's been embargoed. So we haven't been able to share it or to talk about it much. So with that, and with all the reports that came out through DESI, et cetera, you know, I have everything. We now have everything that we need, and it's in final form, which took a while for actually to get to that state in terms of the CPR review for special education, which I believe you have in your packets today.
Yep.
But yeah, you'll start seeing more come about from that goal, those objectives.
Yep. And I believe you also handed out just an updated sheet because you did have a little more progress since we last met, just to give everybody an update. So, these were handed out. If you didn't get one, I believe Mrs. Barney will have some more of these with additional comments so you can kind of get even a further update of some movement on some of the goals. Any comments or questions from the committee for Dr. Kazivan? I just thank you for the hard work and staying on target. And we look forward to all of the other movement as the year goes on. All right. Next up, we have our public forum. Is there any public input this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to NDEA. And I don't see our NDA reps here, so we'll move over that item as well. And we'll go to school committee comments. Any comments from the school committee that you would like to make?
I'm just looking forward to this year. It was very exciting to learn about all the little things that we learned about on Saturday. We had our workshop, and we're excited to see all the growth that we're going to be witnessing in our district and welcoming all our new administrators. It's exciting for us, too. So thank you.
Comments? I just did want to bring up just some, I'll do some PR plug without the students here to plug some of the things. Next week is homecoming week at the high school. I encourage all alumni to come out. We're having, I believe you're calling it Warrior Fest, if I'm not mistaken, from 3:00 to 6:00 on Saturday, October 6th. Is it?
Yeah.
If that's the right date, the 6th. There'll be booths set up out front. There's a petting zoo. All sorts of games. More food than you can imagine. So I encourage everyone in the community to come on out. The kickoff for our homecoming football game is Saturday night. I believe it's at 6:00, although the Warrior Fest ends at 6:00, so we'll figure that all out. It is 6:00, okay? So come out for the game. And most exciting is there's fireworks afterwards. So that'll be, and the fireworks are at 8 o'clock. Thank you for getting the phone signals. They are playing Gardner. So it will be a local game, so that'll be a lot of fun. We should get a lot of local people here, too. And again, I encourage all the alumni because one of the things that I've been saying is we lose the meaning of homecoming because homecoming means the alumni come home. So please, alumni, come home and come out to our games. It's very important that we stay connected and involved in the community. And it's always nice, even though, I'll be honest, it's been really long since I graduated, and I don't recognize half the people I graduated with. But, you know, please come out. It should be a lot of fun. And I hear Mr. Mason, were you gonna be in a dunk tank? No, no, no. That was something else, sorry. Oh, okay. Any other comments? Okay.
No.
No. New business. The next up on our agenda is the revision and recertification of the FY19 budget. If everyone remembers, way back when, in March, we certified our budget, and we passed that information along to the towns for approval on their warrants at their annual town meetings in May. Phillipston passed the budget without an issue. Templeton, there was an oversight, and part of the monies were left off of the warrant. So through speaking with them and with the state to ensure that we didn't end up in a 1/12 situation, which is, could be a mess, we recertified our budget back in June, taking out the amount that they didn't pass, with the understanding that they always have a fall town meeting, and it is scheduled for October 18th, and that the item would be added onto the warrant on the 18th. The monies had already been planned for in the town budget. It just didn't make it onto the warrant. So what we're doing tonight is we are making the motions once again to recertify the budget to the original numbers so that Templeton can then include this item on their warrant. So I would take a motion. I believe Vicki will be our reader today.
I make the motion that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote and certify the amount of $20,415,651 for the FY19 budget.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any questions? Roll call vote. Mr. Mason? Mrs. Mattson? Mr. Marks? Mrs. Robichaud?
Aye.
Mrs. Kojal?
Aye.
Mrs. Chardier?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says aye. Unanimous.
I make a motion that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote the estimated income of $10,277,744 for FY19, which is based on the Chapter 70 and 71A from the Governor's House Budget One submission.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Mason? Mrs. Mattson?
Aye.
Mr. Marks? Mrs. Robichaud?
Aye.
Mrs. Kojal?
Aye.
Mrs. Chardier?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says aye. Unanimous.
I make a motion that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote the assessment to Templeton in the amount of $6,332,751.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Mattson?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Aye.
Mrs. Kojal?
Aye.
Mrs. Chardier?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says aye. So unanimous.
I make a motion that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote the assessment to Phillipston in the amount of $1,532,95.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Mason? Mrs. Mattson?
Aye.
Mr. Marks? Mrs. Robichaud?
Aye.
Mrs. Kojal?
Aye.
Mrs. Chardier?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says aye.
I make a motion that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote the debt service of $502,055, of which $417,911 for Templeton's assessment, and $84,144 for Phillipston's assessment.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Mason? Mrs. Mattson? Mr. Marks? Mrs. Robichaud?
Aye.
Mrs. Kojal? Mrs. Chardier?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says aye. Unanimous. Thank you. So that recertifies our budget, and our treasurer, I believe, has to send a letter out. And we will make Templeton aware of the actual, which they should have from the last time anyway, of what needs to get included. So, great. Thank you, Mrs. Chardier, for reading all those. Next up is our homecoming game, the fireworks. Dr. Kazivan, I'll let you kind of introduce the topic.
Sure. Let me just get to the, sorry, I have to find my page here, sorry. So we, okay, so the fireworks are fairly expensive. And we met with the members of the Lyreman's Club to discuss the overall cost of the fireworks. And one of the things that they were proposing initially was that there'd be some sort of, and I think the actual name of this was kind of like a fireworks fee because we don't charge the students coming in to any of the athletic games. So it would be almost impossible to see whom was Narragansett. And we don't, and there is no differentiation if they're, you know, look like they're a school age and they come. So there was this discussion to, or this request to ask basically permission to either increase the gate charge for adults, and maybe a dollar or something to that effect for students. And so when we met, we thought of this probably from a very different perspective than I think that many, that they thought we would come from. We really don't see this to be a cost of the, that should be incurred by the Lyreman's Club. There, you know, many of our organizations are doing wonderful things to obviously make money, to give back, you know, through scholarships or otherwise to our students. And so it seemed kind of productive, quite frankly, to figure out a way to charge others, and then they were still gonna have to incur a pretty good cost. So we thought about a few things, and there was a thought that maybe the school committee line, which exists, that is for dues and for conference, et cetera. And when we looked at the line, there wasn't really, even with no one going to a conference or any type of dues, there wasn't really enough money in there to do anything. So Ann Marie and I looked at some other possibilities, and we thought that a good place to start in regards to reimbursement for, or just paying outright for the fireworks were to be from the building use revolving. Seeing that it's a facilities use, and that the facilities will be used, obviously, to have this wonderful event, it made sense that the cost of the fireworks could come from that revolving. And that way, they wouldn't have to worry about trying to figure out a way, when I say make a profit, that's not truly what I'm saying here. It's in order to make enough money so they can give it right back, honestly, to the community or to our school community. We don't want them to worry about that. We want, and plus, this is a great district event, something that probably I should've thought of, quite frankly. And I'm happy to say that. It certainly, you know, they've worked very hard, the whole group. And so I think it's, it would be my recommendation that we cover the cost of those fireworks from that revolving account.
Comments?
It was $4,100, $4,100 and some change, but roughly $4,100.
And it's coming out of which account?
The building use revolving.
Yeah, it's rental revolving on your sheets.
That's not the general, not the generals, because they were revolving it out.
That's the church on Sunday.
Right.
And that's Berlin.
Bonding liability, are there any concerns with that? Do we have it, or are there?
Yep. So we've, that all, we've worked that out, actually, this summer with the fire, well, just from a safety perspective, the fire department, police department, and those type of issues, we've worked out. You know, honestly, one of the bigger issues is that they want to have a bonfire. And actually, through insurance, the fire department, they'd rather have fireworks than a bonfire, and so would I. So quite frankly, people don't like fires around schools.
Where are they setting them off? At the lower field?
Yeah, by the baseball, on the baseball field. So we have snow fence, and we've done, we have all that planned out with the police and fire department, et cetera.
Are you looking for us to make a motion?
Sure. I mean, obviously, that's the recommendation from this side. So that would be the decision.
I think we should, just to clarify that we are all on board with spending money out of that account for something that we certainly hadn't discussed prior to the budget planning process.
And I make a motion that we take the fireworks fees out of the building use revolving, around $4,100. Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further conversation or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Okay, so it was not unanimous. Okay, motion is passed. The next item has to do with the towns.[1699.94] There was a change in the town election dates for both Templeton and Phillipston, if everybody goes back in time. The town of Templeton voted at their annual election and I believe on their warrant in, in the May timeframe to move their May elections to the third Monday of the month so they could do the town meeting before the elections. Phillipston at the time did not do that. We had identified an issue with school committee elections because we do cross-town, so there's a lot of discussion. Phillipston had their special town meeting on September nineteenth, a week ago, and this item was on the special town meeting warrant and was passed, I believe unanimously, by the people at the town meeting to move their voting date to the third Monday in May, so both towns are now in sync as well, which is great. But that leads us to the next item, which is the change in the school calendar to support a change in the town election date. So we typically have given the kids the day off. This would be, I'm showing May sixth, I don't know if that's the correct date, is it May sixth? We have on our calendar today.
And it's now May twentieth.
And it's now May twentieth, so it was recommended by the superintendent that we do this so that we don't have our kids in the building while townspeople are coming in and out. I would take a motion to change our school calendar and update it so we can get that notification out to everybody impacted.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion?
Just so to clarify, we're changing May sixth day off to May twentieth day off?
Yes, yes, so May sixth will be in school, so it's...
And that's a full day.
That's a full day, yeah. Anything else? Okay, hearing no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous. And now I can stop talking for the moment and I will turn this over to our superintendent for his report.
Great, thank you. Jeez. On your, the first item under the superintendent's report is a donation. And so M. Nelson Masonery and Construction, if you haven't been out back, literally, it started last week, we've contracted with them to re-side the snack shack. Obviously, they were missing siding and it just, it didn't look, it didn't look very pleasing for sure, and honestly, we were worried about rot because rain and the weather itself. So we contracted with them to, to re-side. We knew that the roof wasn't great, but we thought that we would take care of that down the road a piece. And after he looked at the entire structure, he said, "I have all these extra shingles, we, you know, we're going to be out here anyway. Tell you what, we'll do the roof as a donation." So, which is fantastic, right? So what you have in your packet or, in a, I was going to say on your computer, but you don't have them, so, sorry, is a roof donation in the, in the amount of $2,500, which covers the materials and of course, the labor.
So I would take a motion to accept the donation. I have a first, do I have a second? I have a couple of seconds. Any discussion, comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous. So, and I'm certain you'll be sending a nice thank you letter out and...
Oh, yes, yes. Absolutely. Oh, my gosh.
When, what timeframe?
They should, well, the roof is...
I see, it's just about...
The roof is done.
Okay.
They've done, the, last Saturday, they did quite a bit, but the rain has literally stopped them, so they would be done by now. It will be done well before homecoming. That was kind of our push, was to, of course, the bleachers and to have the snack shack to be recided before homecoming and it'll, it'll absolutely be done well before then, so.
Great, great, thank you.
Depending on the weather. Should be done in a week. School choice, you know, we, we talk about school choice a lot because it's been one of our largest areas of growth. And I can remember this time of the year, I don't, we don't get into school choice out because we don't really know that number. We wait for the state to tell us, quite frankly, how many students are school choicing out of the district and they report on that in very early December. But what we do know at this point in time as of September tenth is that we have 247 students who have school choiced into the district. Now, you know, people say, "Well, in comparison to..." Well, last, you know, last year when we took the snapshot around October first, we were around 200, I believe seventeen or eighteen, and I can double check that on the slide, but either way, or actually, it might have been even lower than that, but we, we have increased that number of students. We did, we did so very strategically. We just did not just open the doors wide. We have not, as I have said almost more times than I can remember, we have not taken a student in school choice from, to be the BES in, well, I think, I don't think, I don't think I've accepted one or maybe two, maybe one or two, I think, at BES since I've been here. They have been closed very early on. In my, in my tenure, the building is quite full as we know. TC, we did, we have, we have not accepted any at the, at the one, first grade level. We do, we did accept a couple at the kindergarten level. Where we strategically accepted students were at seventh grade, eighth grade, and at the high school. Since that time, we've, the school committee, we, as you know, we close school choice and we are not currently accepting any school choice students as of right now. We did that for a myriad of reasons. One, the fact that we wanted to see our school population stabilize, we wanted to see where we're really at, you don't really know until October, quite frankly, until people kind of get settled, and, you know, the disruption of new, again, school choice, and we, and we have kids moving in all the time, so that, that never stops. I mean, we have students who move in or move out, and that happens. So right now, we're at 247 school choice students for the year, and, you know, we'll get into, I'll just kind of ease into enrollment because it's all, you know, it certainly lends itself to that. Right now, we're at 1,432 students. Last year, we closed the books, so to speak, in June with 1,436 students. If it sounds, boy, that's kind of a, that's uncanny, it's really by design. We know right now in these areas, especially at the elementary, what we can handle, quite frankly, in terms of total amount of students. School choice is a fickle mistress, as they say, and it can, you can turn upside down in a minute, and it, I, we've seen it happen that way, so you have to be smart when we do these things. We have to make sure that we have the capacity, we have the space. So, and I've almost, we've shut off the, we've shut off the online, that's how they were, people could apply, we just simply shut it down because we were well over, I don't even know, forty, fifty applicants who were still waiting, who had requested school choice or...
Applying for next year as well.
What's that?
They're applying for next year already.
And they're applying for next year already, so we just, we just closed the portal, so to speak. So we're in good shape, quite frankly. Our numbers are high, pretty much everywhere, with the exception, in high school, they're, they're at a good level, but we're just holding on and we'll, we, we watch this every month, as you know.
And CPR update, we were, we have a report, but I know we're going to discuss it next month in detail.
Right. So the coordinated program review, which I guess is almost talking about Christmas that it was finally going to get here and finally come, the final report finally made it, honestly, in September, quite, quite honestly, and we had plenty of draft reports. We met with the folks from the Department of Special Education, from DESI, and so now before you, you have the actual report. We've already started our action planning back in, boy, I want to say June, July, when we had some preliminary information, but not official. So we've been working on quite a bit of these, these issues or findings. And so really, next month, what you're, what you're, what you'll have is that Officer Dr. Solivados will be speaking to this directly, but you'll also have our plan of action, which will incorporate what we've already done, what we've already submitted, and what we'll need to do over the next year. For those who care to know about the CPR process, it was, it was pretty easy. You, they'd come out, they'd, they'd have findings and, you know, if they came out again, when they came out again, they'd find out if you did anything about those findings. The process has changed dramatically. It, you have one year now, one, one year to make the corrections that you need to make and you need to, of course, prove that. You, you need to provide that, you need to provide evidence. And so a great part of, a great deal of what Dr. Solivados will be doing, and Mrs. Geist and myself and everybody else will be fix, you know, fixing and working on some of these areas and providing evidence back to the state.
So this report is only those, are only those items that they cited us that we have to create an action plan for? So there were many other items that we were fully in compliance with?
Oh, absolutely, so, right, absolutely.
The church is looking at this.
Yes, I'm looking at this, and they're not in compliance with any.
No. The state is very nice to point out what you're not doing well, and not to waste the paper, but we, there were obviously quite a few areas that we were doing just fine with and, but, but we just wanted to show that we're, we don't want to get lost in all the wonderfulness and miss something that we need to...
Oh, I like the wonderfulness.
Right.
Well, we look forward to Dr. Solivados coming next month and filling us in on everything that we're working on.
Fantastic.
Anything else that you'd like to report on?
No, actually, that's, that's it.
No?
No, absolutely not.
All right. Curriculum, curriculum and instruction, Ms. Geist? Sure, if you'd like.
So we have a couple of things going on.
Just a couple?
Beginning of the year, no. We had really a very important positive rollout of our positive behavioral interventions and supports at the beginning of the year. All staff were trained on our first PD day. That rollout was going very successfully. The team met yesterday for their first monthly meeting and that is really going well district-wide. In addition to that, the middle and high school in particular are running restorative circles as another aspect of training students to have correct behaviors and our social emotional learning program. I attended one today to see how it goes with students. I've done some with staff and with admin and that went really well. All staff pre-K to twelve were trained in that practice, but right now it's really strong in the middle school and high school. We have six new teachers and mentors that have their first meeting tomorrow with me. We'll have eight to ten meetings throughout the year. They had an induction program for full days on August twenty-first and second, and the focus will be on classroom practices, instruction, and the educator evaluation system. We have two curriculum teams. One is the six to twelve mathematics team that begins on October fourth. We have six to seven teachers participating in that from the middle and high schools. We did begin some of that work, especially with the department head from the high school last year as we're, as we're aligning our, especially high school Algebra I to the new standards because in 2019, the high school will be tested on MCAS two point oh. Until now, they've been tested on legacy MCAS, so that was important to get that rolling this year. So we'll flesh out that work and do some more work on some other math courses. The elementary curriculum writing team begins on October ninth. I have about seven teacher members on that as well. Both teams have some admin support as well so that the curriculum writing really lives in the buildings, right? And we're going to work with the, the elementary ELA team to refine and finalize a lot of the, excuse me, a lot of the work that was done last year. In addition, this year, we're going to do two learning walkthroughs, which is a process where teams of teachers and administrators visit a sampling of classrooms to gather building-wide data on trends of what's happening in the building. And it's not the same as classroom observations by an evaluator, and it's not the same as, you know, me walking through the class. It's teams of teachers looking for, with admin, looking at a particular focus, and that data is aggregated, so you look at building-wide trends and you might come up with findings that say, you know, in seventy-five percent of classrooms, we saw X. So that helps guide the administration and myself and Dr. Kazivan to think about what kinds of supports we need globally in the building, so it's a really good process that good, well-performing districts follow, and we're doing that. We did one last year at the end of the year to get the ball rolling and get people used to the process, and we had a professional development day, I don't remember, sometime in the spring where every staff member was trained, so everybody can participate on that. The team will probably have six to nine teachers on each learning walk. So we have an elementary one happening in October and a middle high school one happening in November. Our focus of inquiry is on social emotional learning, and it's like a rubric, so it has specific things that you're looking for when you visit, then the teams get together and you aggregate the data. It's really, the emphasis is on that it's information on school-wide trends and it's not about individual teachers. So that data will be used for planning professional development and supports that teachers need throughout the year, and then we'll do another one in the spring, so we'll bookend the year with these to see how that work that we've done throughout the year has helped us. Finally, I just wanted to say that we have a team mostly of administrators, but some of our specialists, like our reading specialist and our math coach, working with me to implement tiered intervention practices for struggling learners. This is something we had planned to do and it's going to be particularly important as we move into our new accountability system in the state, which we will talk about more once the embargo is lifted and we can address that, but there is a component, we didn't do it because of this, but it's a good match, the, there is a component in the new accountability system that rates districts on how they raise scores for their struggling learners. So we have a system for that, tiered intervention, that's going really well. We have always had some practices in this district, so people have been doing this, but we're formalizing some practices and kind of refining some other practices. So all of the students have been screened for reading and math, the struggling students have been identified using multiple sources of data, and interventions, instruction has begun, so that's going really well as well. I think that's...
Well, I have. That's it?
That's all. Just a couple.
Questions or comments? Sounds like you're very busy.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Good things to have?
Yes, yes. All right, next we have our subcommittee reports. Academic administrative, we, we kicked off our first meeting of the year a couple of weeks ago, just kind of got back into the swing of things. A lot of the information that Kate just shared with us, we discussed there as well, so I won't reiterate any of that. Finance, just as a reminder, we are meeting as, with finance as the committee in the whole this year, so we have scheduled some dates for meetings, and I believe our first official finance meeting is...
November fourteenth.
No, I think there's one in October first, but it's not right before, let me just give you guys the date to make sure that you have it on there. October fifteenth, we're reaching out to the boards of Templeton and Phillipston, the select boards, the FinCom and Phillipston, the advisory board in Templeton, to do a multi-board meeting, so more to come on that. That's the fifteenth at five, five-thirty in the library. We'll have to talk about the time because I saw Phillipston mentioned five-thirty, but I thought it was five, so we'll, we'll figure that out and get everybody the exact time. And then our first school committee finance meeting is scheduled for, I thought I had it in here. I apologize, it's somewhere in, we'll, we'll get a message out to everybody, I apologize because it's...
I have the November one, but I don't have the October.
Yeah, there was, I want to say it was, it was some, we did, we had one on an evening of October so we could kick it off, and then the plan is to meet an hour before each of our meetings, so five o'clock before the November, December, January, and February meetings, and then we'll go and have our certification. So we'll get those dates out once again to everybody and make sure that everybody's aware of the, the time for that October fifteenth meeting, which will be in the library at, like we did last year when we had that meeting.
So our warrant subcommittee meetings won't be on those ones?
We might be able to piggyback them. We'll leave that, we could talk about that.
All right.
So the first thing with facilities that I'd, I'd like to, since the chair creates our subcommittee listing, is our new member, Mr. Marks, will be on our facilities subcommittee, and that means, did we have an empty, did we not fill, who else is on? We got Hank and Deb, so the three of you will be on our facilities subcommittee, so thank you and welcome. I'll actually ask Dr. Kazivan or Mrs. Geister for updates or Mr. Mason on what's been going on, whoever wants to speak.
Well, we haven't had a, we haven't had a meeting yet.
Okay, since the end of the year.
The bleachers are in, and the buildings are in pretty good shape.
Yeah, okay.
You can go.
It's okay.
Trying, trying to tell them to go.
Yes, especially before we get to policy.
Yeah, you don't want to be...
Go home and rest up for the morning. Next up is our policy. We have, when we left in June, we had made a decision not to introduce or do anything with policy in August, so all we have is a second reading, so Mrs. Kojal?
So we have some second readings to approve, to update, delete, or add. So proposed update, J.I., student rights and responsibilities. We're updating this policy to reflect M.A.S.C. wording and to include... We're updating this policy to reflect MASC wording and to include civil rights wording and legal references. Proposed for deletion is J.I.C.B., which is care of school property by students. And this is procedural in nature. Information should be contained in the student handbooks. Proposed update, J.I.C.C., student conduct on school buses. This sets the district policy and outlines responsibility for student conduct on school buses. Proposed for deletion, J.I.C.D., student conduct in school. These items must be included in the student handbook, which is an extension of our policies. Proposed update, J.I.C.F.B., bullying prevention. Updated for more current language and laws. We have many pages, and that was also part of the review that we had with, we just talked about. Proposed update, J.J.I.F., athletic concussion policy. This is updated to include current language and legal policy reference, removes procedural content, which will be included in the new policy, J.J.I.F.-R, which is proposed to be new. And this contains all the procedures and reference information recommended by MASC. So I am looking for a second on all of those.
I have a second. Any discussion? Dr. Casvant, I just want to make sure, I know you had the concussion policy that we circulated around to make sure that the health group and AD didn't have any issues and no comments had come back.
No comments from that.
Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second to approve and implement these policies. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So unanimous.
And we are meeting on Monday at 6:00? Are we still doing that?
I believe we can move in the morning.
Oh, we could do in the morning? Oh, great.
Yeah, let's, after the, this meeting's over, we'll, we'll get that time set. Okay, long-term planning, Mrs. Mattson?
We have a couple of short meetings prior to the September meeting. But nothing really, much to report on, other than I think maybe the last meeting that we had, we had a discussion about, and it's kind of been going on for a while, is the discussion that we had about middle school, whether or not we wanted, if we thought we needed the middle school principal or not, that position. And I think if I remember correctly, we thought we might want to bring it out to the committee and kind of see what you all thought about having a middle school principal, you know, instead of like an interim thing. What we, what you guys thought about having the importance of that role in middle school. If I'm wrong, you...
Yep, no, no, no. And, and at our workshop on Saturday, that was one of the topics of discussion as we spoke about the budget and just kind of gave a preview of, okay, what is it we need to prioritize? And I don't want to speak to the group, but the group did say that they were looking favorably upon keeping that position in place because of all of the reasons that Dr. Casvant had laid out, and as far as accountability and several other things. So I think the direction we're looking at is looking to keep the position in place, but not...
Yeah, just as a summary, you know, the most influential person in a child's education, of course, is the teacher. With a very close second being the principal. But interestingly, the person who has the largest impact on a teacher's performance or abilities is the principal. So it becomes, you know, you need that type of oversight. And of course, we discussed a lot of other, you know, a lot of other reasons. But there's the basic management of a building, is the fact that it's middle school. You know, those types of things we discussed, not only in long-term planning, but at the workshop. So, yeah, I think that, it was my, my impression, I would think, or I would say that, that we were all in agreement that it was, it was an important role.
More importantly, that we'd like to keep a middle school 6, 7, 8, and do a high school 9 through 12.
Right. Interestingly, and I know I, I said married, you know, marriedly, but, you know, the folks that have worked in 6 through 12 buildings have said fairly universally that you lose your identity as a 6, 7, 8. And it really doesn't, to get to high school, that type of, that's, you know, just, this is a personal, you know, observation. It'd be a terrible time to lose your identity or not feel, you know, connected in some point. And again, you know, you know, I feel strongly about that. But the, the promise was that we were going to look into these two, these two issues, right? With the new building and what that would bring. And last year, we talked about looking at the reconfiguration of the district. And this year was looking at the viability of a middle school principal. And so those are the two charges, you know, that we took.
Thank you. Templeton Elementary School building, okay?
The architects met with some of the staff last week, all did over some of the fixtures and furniture to be in the new building. I don't know if Dr. Casvant, I wasn't there, but I think Dr. Casvant has a couple of things.
Yeah, so the, actually, it was kind of a, it was kind of a surreal thing that we actually picked out furniture. Oh my God, I guess it is real. We're picking out chairs and tables and stuff. So that happened about, about three weeks ago. And, you know, the, we are, it's, that's the F, F, and E, the furniture, fixtures, and equipment budget, which takes a very long time. That was a, you know, that was a pretty big meeting. Took six hours. So we just rotated people through. So that was, that was interesting. And, and of course, we're talking about landscape, and we're talking about the, just, I don't want to say it's punchless stuff. It's not, but it's, 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 it's not whether or not the building will be built. It's, okay, do you want a stool or do you want a chair? You know, we're talking about where rooms are going to be, and where's the first grade, and it's staffing, and, yeah, so it's been great.
I'm just curious, have they said anything about what, so when they were doing the presentations, one of the schools that they were showing was the Center School in Stowe. So I'm kind of familiar with that school. And one of the neatest things, or one of the things, I guess, that attracts me in that school is that in the lobby area, they have some like tiles that the kids have designed. Has that, has that been a discussion for...
We have ordered the ceramic tiles for the art teacher, and she's working on them.
That's the coolest thing. That is the coolest thing to walk in and see in that building to me, so.
That's great.
Other than that, we're on budget, on schedule.
Great, good.
Wow.
Do we have, so what is, you know, on budget, on schedule? So what is, is the date that we expect to have the keys handed over to us?
Well, so according to, and they, they guard this information.
And that's roughly, roughly.
Let me just refer, they're not going to go say by August, no.
I mean, not by September 1, because that, that's early into the school year, so.
Right, the, the work that, you know, we, we have been told that school will start, and again, I only say this because we, we've talked briefly about when school will start next year. But when we decide to have school open, whether it be the last week of August, so after Labor Day, or whatever the case may be, it'll be, it'll be ready to go. They, they do not foresee any, any major issues that could, could slow the progress. That, that building will be buttoned up. I want to say by the end of October, November. I'm, I need to get some clarity on that. But once they're inside, they're putting up interior walls right now. I mean, that is about as good a sign as you can possibly have. And so once they really have it buttoned up, it's just all interior work. And weather's not going to, not going to affect that.
Do you have weekly meetings with the architects?
We have, it's, gosh, is it not weekly, it's monthly. Monthly with them, but there's a weekly, I didn't think about this. There's a weekly construction meeting that they have, and, and on the same day, actually. I've gone to one or two of them. They're really talking about construction, so I just kind of sit there, you know, not a lot, so.
Most of the stuff, the unknown stuff, sorry, within here, you know, the site work and everything, so everything else is going fine.
That's great. It's very exciting, very exciting. The Phillipston Memorial Building Committee, and prior to asking Mrs. Geister for an update, Mr. Sandin was our representative, because it's a town committee to it. So we would like to ask Mr. Marks to now be our, our, our formal...
Dan's still on it?
Dan's still on the committee.
Okay, but we, we have a school committee member. When they designed the committee, the selectmen had identified which groups to take people from. So we will follow up with them. But from a school committee perspective, we would ask Mr. Marks to step in and sit in on our stead. And obviously, yourself and Mr. Moulton, representing us as well as a, you know, the Three Musketeers, would be awesome. But has there been anything, I know the summer was...
We had a meeting earlier this month. We're waiting on the architect to finish the feasibility study, which should be mid-October. That's when his 90 days is up. So once we get that, then we will meet again and then discuss what will happen next.
Because that roof needs to be fixed sooner rather than later. I know that that's been a topic of conversation, yeah.
Heavy rains create leaks and water, so we, we need to, and everyone knows that. It's not like anyone's dragging their feet. It's just, that's absolutely a must.
Anything else? We have no correspondence to review. The next meeting of the school committee, the regular meeting, will be Monday, you know, Monday, it's going to be Wednesday, October 17th. We're back here in the Kiva at 6 o'clock. Any other business anyone would like to bring up? Hearing none, we will be adjourning into executive session for reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares. The meeting will not return into open session after we are done. I would take a motion to enter into executive session for that reason.
So moved.
And I need a second.
Second.
And we need a roll call. Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Mattson? Mr. Marks? Mrs. Rupshod?
Aye.
Mrs. Kozel?
Aye.
Mrs. Chartier?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says aye. So I thank you, everyone, for coming, and we will see you at our next meeting.